To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Eternal God our Father, Lord God, we come again saying thank you, Lord. Lord, continue to cover and keep us in this city, Lord. Continue to cover and keep our residents, our students, and our staff of our school city, Lord God. And I'm asking that we continue to do your business. Continue to keep our fire and our police safe. In Jesus' name, amen.
First up, roll call.
Alexander.
President.
Vitale.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Kalwinski.
Here.
Salinas.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Whorple.
Here.
Raicos.
Here. We've got eight presidents, Chambers, one electronic. Mayor.
Hi, nice to see you. Thanks to the council. It's good to see you all again. This is my address from February 26, 2024. Before I get started, I want to recognize a gentleman in the audience. He's the former mayor of the city of Hobart. He's now here attending his first Hammond City Council meeting on behalf of his due company. But thank you, Mayor Snedecore. It's good to see you. Mayor Brian Snedecore, welcome to Hammond City Hall. I know he doesn't miss what I'm about to talk about, but we started negotiations with the Hammond FOP representatives this week. We had a, I think it was a good first session to get caught up. We haven't talked for a few years formally. So I know it's no secret to any members of the council, the FOP is having trouble keeping officers because the market has changed for police officers. There's not enough police officers in the ranks to fill the holes that are created. And the only answer for cities like us is to try to compete for our officers. And that is a fact of life. You know, we're seeing officers leave the Hammond ranks and go to other departments, and that's unheard of. And when you look at the pay gaps that's developed between city Hammond's contract and what other cities and towns that are non-union are offering, it's something that we have to address. So it was a good first meeting. We started early with the FOP because it's going to be long. It's going to be hard, and it's the most expensive department we have. It affects every person in this room multiply. It affects us financially. Obviously, it affects us because these officers are in charge of keeping our city safe. So we did start FOP negotiations. I'm sure soon I'll be starting with fire, teamsters, operating engineers. This is the year of contracts. So I'll keep you up to date if you want to talk. I will talk to you off the record. And obviously, during negotiations, we want to try to keep what we talk about internal until it becomes necessary to involve you all. So but if you do have questions, obviously, I'm willing to answer. We held 209 Day at the Hammond Civic Center. I think it's our sixth or seventh annual. Over 2,000 people attended. This year's theme was the Wild, Wild Midwest. We had great entertainment. It was a bluegrass group called Bourbon, The Bourbon Aristocracy. And we also had Tim Gleason and the Whiskey Disco Band. We had Mechanical Bull. We had a lot of great food, a lot of great drinks, great time. So thank you to the council members that supported us and showed up. We appreciate it. Sportsplex has been doing really well. It seems like Park Department's been doing outstanding recently. The Sportsplex is doing so well, it's starting to have an impact on our neighborhoods. I know Councilman Whorple has been on me and talking to me about parking issues on Ontario and the old church parking lot on 167th. Unfortunately, when we do really well with buildings like the Sportsplex, it has an effect on our neighbors around it. I don't have to tell Councilman Kalwinski any differently. When we have the fest up in the north, we have problems that flow into the neighborhoods. This is happening. So we're happy that on February 17th and 18th, the Sportsplex hosted a Level 12, a company, a company named Level 12. It's a company out of Tennessee. They had 96 volleyball teams, 24 different clubs from all over the Midwest at the Sportsplex. I've never seen that place more packed. I've never seen, they had a problem, so to speak, where one wave started late, and everything is clockwork. But if one wave starts late, and the other wave gets there on time, and you also had soccer going full steam on the other side. So we really had two loads of girls that were getting ready to play volleyball in the building at one time and a full soccer side. It's awesome to see that as mayor, because you see thousands of people, all the restaurants are packed. But then I'm driving through the neighborhoods, I'm talking to the council people, I'm getting angry phone calls. So we need to do better. Also, by the way, last weekend volleyball, they had a, as big as we thought it was the weekend before, they had an 84-team tournament this weekend from 21 different clubs from Michigan, Wisconsin, Southern Illinois, and Southern Indiana for a one-day event. Soccer's operating at high capacity. 66 teams are participating in our league play in youth, high school, and men's division. So we've got great things happening in the Park Department. So congratulations to everybody working so hard over there. Attended AIM. I know that some of you all went to AIM as well. Went to the legislative dinner, sat with, I met basically with the entire Northwest Indiana delegation. Of course, I met with our local reps, Representative Jackson, Senator Donnell. I had dinner with him. Phil Talon helped me out a lot with that. Also attended Indiana Casino Host Cities Meeting, which was interesting. Talking about trends in the gaming industry, sat through a briefing from Ed Faganbaum. If you ever get a chance to go through a briefing about the casino gaming industry from Ed Faganbaum, you should do it. I know Clerk Golick was around to see a lot of that when it went down, but he went through the whole history of how gaming evolved from a concept in the 1980s all the way to where we are today. It was fascinating. So it was great for me to hear it, even though I knew a lot of it. It was great to hear how things progressed to where we are today. Learned a couple of things about Indiana's gaming industry. $2.36 billion brought in last year, which is solid. The scary thing is, because I know we all take, we all watch our gaming reports, and we know that obviously we've been trending downward. Interesting. So keep in mind, Indiana has a $2.36 billion casino industry. The video gaming terminals, they're the slot machines we see in the laundromats, in the restaurants in Illinois, have a billion dollars coming in a year. Our entire casino industry is 2.3 billion. Illinois' gaming terminals, the slot machines that we see in Cal City, 1 billion alone. Illinois makes more money off of the slot machines. They're called VGTs, video gaming terminals. They make more money off of those than they do in traditional casinos in Illinois right now. Their VGTs are half of Indiana's market. So when you go to Illinois and you see slot machines everywhere, that's what's going on right now. It's unfortunate. Sports wagering generated $39 million last year. Local cities and towns get none of that. 2023 total tax revenue for the state of Indiana, $643 million in the gaming industry. Also met with economic development team regarding Gateway Station. Councilwoman Salinas, we were driving all around your district, taking a look at some buildings that probably shouldn't be there, and we're wondering why they're still there. After everything has gone on, it seems like we're completely rebooting that whole area. And then you have a couple scrapyards just sort of sitting there. So I had a meeting with my staff about that, and I want to talk to Councilman Allen, see what he thinks about that as well. I know you guys, before you tonight, you have the appropriating the funds set forth in the 2024 CDBG home and ESG budgets. CDBG budget's about $2.4 million. Home, $855,000. ESG, $177,000. So this CDBG budget funded by the federal government, little over $3 million. Some highlights for you all to keep in mind. $200,000 of that budget set aside for the basement backflow prevention program that we've been talking about, run through the Hammond Sanitary District. $475,000 is set aside for major demo clearance projects that unfortunately happens all too often. And we do have $200,000 set aside for infrastructure and facilities that are available to low-income neighbors or low-income residents. So last but not least, I want to send condolences to an employee, former deputy controller for me, Mona Campbell, who passed away recently. Mona's been with the city Hammond for 23 years. She has four children, three daughters, one son, and she's a good friend of all of ours. And she also is a mother to Chris Campbell, who's the department head for IT. So condolences to his family on their loss. So sorry about the long report. I don't know if you all have any questions.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
When you were talking about the Sportsplex, I got several calls this weekend, last weekend, and the weekend before. And I keep telling these people that the calls I'm getting the most about are good problems to have, which is the Sportsplex and the hockey rink since the Ninja Kids went in there.
I agree with you, Councilman.
And I know that, do we have an update on the extra parking lot by the ice rink? Or is that...
Could I answer?
Yeah.
Okay. First off, agree. It's a good problem to have. The Ninja Kids and ice rink is overflowing into the neighborhood around Dalling Park, just like it's a good problem to have when the Sportsplex is so packed that it's overflowing into the neighborhoods. However, it's unacceptable that there's parking in the neighborhoods. Okay? So I'm not going to go to the neighbors and say, hey, this is a good thing. It's not. I mean, and I know, Dave, you, Councilman, you spoke with me multiple times about this, and I took your concerns and amplified them to my staff. And tomorrow morning, we're going to get out there, and we're going to pound some signs, because this coming weekend at the Sportsplex is going to be busy. And I've been told it could be busier than the last two weeks. So we need to get on this tomorrow. So Councilman, could you make sure you and I talk tomorrow morning, so that I have staff out there getting ready on the Ontarios and the church parking lots, get our towers ready, and let people know, you got to find a spot. You cannot park in the neighborhoods illegally.
I just know that last Saturday, that those two brand-new lots were filled, and they were literally parking down 167th. And I'm glad I never did what I threatened with Barry, and that is gerrymander that into my district, because I still get the overflow of it.
Yeah. It's a, thank you, Councilman. It's not acceptable how that went down. It's full to capacity. However, if you do, if you did park in the old Walmart parking lot, you could, you could park there. There's still space there, but people were parking in the neighborhood instead. So we'll get on it, though. And I apologize that it happened.
Anybody else?
Nice to see you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, next up, approval of minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes from the February 12, 2024 meeting.
Second.
Been a motion of second by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion? An amendment?
Yes, we have an amendment on page nine. We have a minor typo. Middle of the page says, I'm talking about the tax abatement for the revitalization project on 24 Marble Street. The typo should be 10-year tax abatement.
10-year instead of then?
Instead of then, make it 10.
Can you make a motion to amend?
That we amend it?
For second. Second by Councilman Emerson. Any discussion on the amendment for the minutes? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Vitale.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Whorple.
Yes.
Raicos.
Yes. Amendment passes 9-0. Now the minutes has amended. Go ahead with the roll call since we did the roll call on the amendment.
Alexander.
Yes.
Vitale.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Whorple.
Yes.
Raicos.
Yes.
Passes, approval of minutes passes 9-0. Next up, approval of claims.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I move for approval of claims, beginning with claims dated February 15, 2024, and ending with claims dated February 21, 2024. Claim number 1547 through claim number 1951 inclusive in the amount of $4,867,793.62.
Second.
Been a motion of second by, by Councilman Vitale. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Vitale.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Whorple.
Yes.
Raicos.
Yes. Registered claims passes 9-0.
Next up, public hearings.
Item A, an ordinance appropriating the proceeds of the annual action plan and dealing with other matters pertaining to the expenditure of planned proceeds for program year 2024.
Okay, is there anybody here would like to speak on 24-04? Anybody like to speak on 2404? Anybody here to speak on 2404? Public hearings closed. Next up, communications.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Salinas.
I'd like to just extend a big thank you to the Hammond graffiti removal program. Throughout the second district, we've experienced quite a bit of a rash, actually, of graffiti, not just under the bridges, but on garages and even on a church, unfortunately. But the graffiti removal program comes out right away, and they make sure that it's painted over. And I just want to say thank you, because there were several incidents this past month in the second district. So great job, Hammond graffiti removal program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr.
Any other communications?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Whorple.
In caucus, we all received this handout about a water update going around. This has nothing to do with the city of Hammond. I know in the past, this comes around about every five years, and it's a company that, they're not trying to rob you that I'm aware of unless they've changed in the, you know, in the last five years. But what they do is they come around and they offer to test your water lines for you. And they're going to come back and tell you they're full of lead, and they're going to try to sell you a brand-new water lines. So I know there was some concern earlier expressed that people were afraid that they were trying to get in and rob the house. And the way I've seen this done before is they'll have the IDs around their neck, and I don't know, did you say that they're representing themselves from the Hammond Water Department, or no? They're just...
I believe there was some confusion.
Right.
Because they seem to be targeting the elderly.
Yeah. So if these people knock on your door, I don't think they're trying to get in your house. I wouldn't let them in anyway. But I think they're just trying to sell you something and scare you into buying it. So it's from a company called Quality Water Testing Incorporated. So just be on the lookout for it.
Mr. President.
Yes, Council.
And to piggyback on that, if you have a question about your water service, if you think that perhaps there is lead in your pipes, or if you need some type of repair, a meter or whatever, contact the water department, the city of Hammond Water Department, and they will come out and they will check things out for you. But don't just take the word of a company who's soliciting door-to-door to, and in this particular case, it seems as if they were targeting the elderly. Sometimes the elderly are lonely. They want somebody to talk to. Yeah, come on in. Don't do that. Please don't do that. If you have any questions, contact the water department.
And Mr. President, just one last thing. The times I've seen this scam going around, I actually knew somebody that bought it. And the guy showed me that they literally took out his pipe water line, and they put in a rubber hose from the street to the house. In other cases I've seen, it's, you know, buy these solar panels, and you pay us cash, and then you can get reimbursed from the government. That don't happen either, as far as I'm aware. So that's why I brought it up. It was a communication, Council, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other communications? Just a reminder again, March 16th, HC3 will be having the St. Patrick's Day Parade starting at Hessville Park on Kennedy, going straight down Kennedy to 161st. If you'd like to be in the parade, there's, HC3 is still taking applications for, to be in the parade up until the March 1st. Contact HC3 through their website or the Facebook page. Any other communications? Any other communications? Communications.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Sorry, I just want to congratulate the Affiliate Scene Center and their staff for putting on an amazing event on Saturday night. They used to do a black-and-white ball every single year, then COVID slowed it down, and they've adjusted. And this year, they did a masquerade ball. So it was the first time they threw their biggest fundraiser, I think, in the past like four or five years. So I just want to commend their staff for an amazing event that was well-attended, and I'm looking forward to having that back on our calendars for the future, too. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe two of our council people got awards that night as well. Is that correct?
Correct.
Congratulations. Councilman Alexander and Councilman Taylor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was getting ready to write a speech.
All right, any other communications? Any other communications? Communications closed. Committee reports.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Emerson.
The Capitol Improvement Board met on February 21, 2024. Was a Wednesday. We voted on two things. One was $170,575 for construction engineering services with Christopher Burke Engineering for the Dalling Park overflow improvements in the fifth district. And number two, $160,155 for design engineering with the first group engineering for the Market Greenway, Marquette Greenway from 150th to White Oak in the second district. And that's all we voted on.
Mr. President.
Councilman Whorple.
Just to what you said about the water line from Dalling Park Pond over to Kentucky Avenue, I believe.
Yes.
That's one of the reasons why Tapper wasn't done when we did Mahoney Drive, was this project's been around for a couple of years, and I guess we found a new way to fund it or something. But it's got, it's got a Army Corps, I believe, right?
25, 25.
Yeah, but it has nothing to do with the new spot. It's, that's why Tapper wasn't done as part of that project around Dalling Park.
Correct.
Okay, any other committee reports?
Mr. President, council as a whole is going to bring out 2404.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I'd like to update everyone on the upcoming community and crime watch meetings. Edison Community Watch will meet Wednesday, March 6, 6:30 PM at Edison School. Harrison Park Crime Watch will meet at the VFW on Holman Avenue on March 5 at 6:00 PM. Hessville Crime Watch will meet March 21, 6:00 PM at the Gene Shepherd Center. Irving Community Watch will meet 9:30 AM on Friday, March 1 at Irving School in the Art Room. The South Holman Avenue Neighborhood Watch will meet on April 11 at Trinity Lutheran Church on Holman Avenue. I do not have a specific time for that as yet. The Whiting Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet Thursday, March 14, 6:30 PM at Calumet College. And I just want to reiterate to everyone, this is the kind of information that you find out at crime watch meetings. So you and your family will not fall victim to some of these scams and people going door-to-door. It's important that we remain vigilant and make sure that we protect our families and our property, because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other committee reports? Committee reports is closed. Next up, ordinance third and final reading. Third and final passage.
Ordinance number 24-04 sponsored by Councilman Vitale, and ordinance appropriating the proceeds of the annual action plan and dealing with other matters pertaining to the expenditure of planned proceeds for program year 2024. President.
Councilwoman, Councilman Vitale.
Final passage on 2404.
Second.
Been a motion of second by Councilwoman Vines. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman.
The ordinance appropriating the funds set forth on Exhibit 8 of 2024 for CDBG home and ESG for the budget.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Vitale.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Whorple.
Yes.
Raicos.
Yes. 2404 passes 9-0.
President Raicos, that concludes the ordinance's final pass.
Thank you. Clerk Golick. Next up, introduction of ordinances.
Item A, ordinance 24-05 sponsored by Councilwoman Vines, and ordinance to appropriate funds in the Hotel Motel Innkeepers Tax Fund for the Hammond Park.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for first and second reading of 2405 with a public hearing on March 11.
Second.
Been a motion of second by Councilman Salinas. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Vitale.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Whorple.
Yes.
Raicos.
Yes. First and second passes 9-0.
Ordinance 24-06 sponsored by Councilwoman Vines, and ordinance to appropriate funds from the operating balance for the Hammond Park Department.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for first and second reading of...
Recording in progress.
Okay, thank you.
Recording stopped.
I move for first and second reading of 2406 with a public hearing on March 11.
Second.
Been a motion of second by Councilman Salinas. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Vitale.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Whorple.
Yes.
Raicos.
Yes. First and second reading passes 9-0.
President Raicos, that concludes the international ordinance.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Next up, resolutions. There are none. New and unfinished business.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Emerson.
I had a lady call me up on Locust and roughly around Harrison. And so I called the water department, and they were over there very quickly, was on it in minutes. And it turned out it was either a water main or a buffalo box. So kudos to the water department for acting fast and completing the job. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other... Thank you. Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? Any new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is closed. Next up, public expression. First up, George Stoyak.
George Stoyak, Robertsdale. Last meeting, a citizen, April Avila, raised an important issue concerning the problems with the schools and their financing, and made, made the observation that, were she not already a citizen here in Hammond, given the status of our school finances, she would not come here. She would not move here to Hammond. Anybody that was listening, that should have been a dagger in your heart, because that was devastating. Because that means Hammond may start hemorrhaging citizens. And that's just, you know, you're not going to attract any new. We've done all this gentrification on Holman Avenue, Kennedy Avenue, God only knows where else. And for what? If people are going to start leaving, the most important draw, the most important asset of the city is the schools. That's what brings them here, and that's what keeps them here. Now, it's, one thing to say, oh, you know, oh, it's not the city council's fault, or the municipal city's fault of, of the problems that the city schools are suffering. But I'll tell you this, it's your problem now, because you're going to have to deal with the consequences, and that is one of the consequences. And I would pay a little more attention to this than just say, oh, it's not, it's not a city problem. It is. Count on it. It's going to bite you. You know, I mean, it's, I don't want to push that too far. I mean, that's about all I can say. I just thought she made an important point. It hit me, it hit me in the heart when I, when I realized, start playing out the extrapolating the consequences. Also, I wrote a letter to you guys about, I don't know, a month ago, concerning the status of the city in this Fontana's lawsuit, and the, and my contentions, they're not definitive. It was just a, a letter. I seriously doubt that you guys read it, but you should read it, because the reason I wrote it, and most of the time, the reason I write to you guys these letters, is because you have a duty, not just any ordinary duty. Oh, no, 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 no. You guys have a fiduciary duty. That's a little higher standard, to manage the assets of the city and its monies. And I don't think you're scrutinizing, you know, that, that little memo or that letter, whatever you want to call it. I don't know if Mr. Burgess has seen it. No one's talked to me about it. But here we are, the mayor's going downstate. He wants special legislation for food and beverage tax, because why? We're out of money! You know, but, oh, we got money to throw lawyers for cases that we have no dog in the fight. And you guys aren't scrutinizing that. I mean, how much are you paying out those Indianapolis, Indianapolis attorneys? What are they charging you? 500 bucks an hour? 300 bucks an hour? Anyway, I'm not going to beat that into the ground. But you have a duty, fiduciary duty. You know, I, I got no dog in the fight either. I want good government. Because the only thing that's going to save us is good government to get through these hard times. So you guys think about that, because it's futile for me to try to persuade you guys. I've done everything but stand on my head. But neither here nor there, neither here nor there. It's part of my, my duty, too, I guess. That's it.
Thank you, George. Next up, TJ Gerding.
How's it going, guys? Good evening. I just wanted to call everyone's attention to, there's a forest on Parish Avenue called Briar East Woods, and it is a beautiful forest that is heavily used by the community. I know how often you guys have been in there, but there's over two miles of trails going through there. And these aren't trails that naturally sprung up in a forest. These are trails that were carved out by residents using it. They're walking, riding their bikes, walking their dogs, hanging out in the forest for decades and decades. And the trails are used to this day extensively. And, and the city is now planning on demolishing this forest. It's 30 acres. It's an ancient shoreline of Lake Michigan, the high Tolston Dunes. It's a black oak forest. It's beautiful. And the city is planning on demolishing it to build a bridge, Governor's Parkway, to solve the train problem in Hessville. But the problem is, the solution of Governor's Parkway is by no measure the, the best solution to the problem of trains. There's been an alternate solution of an overpass or underpass on Grand Avenue that's been proposed for probably up to two years at this point by community members. It's half the cost of Governor's Parkway. It's, it provides better passage for emergency vehicles. It better suits all the kids walking to school on Grand Avenue, and it doesn't demolish a forest that is beloved by this community. So I implore you guys to please explore this alternative. We've been talking and talking and talking. Please look into it some more. If you have info that I'm not privy to, that is preventing you guys from doing this, please let me know. I'll hang around for a couple minutes after the meeting, because I'm not sure what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, TJ. Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, I'll